I was amped up to do this show today. Now it's at sort of last minute today and have some good video. We're going to play some video I haven't seen from last night's Canton Select Board catching up on the public comment from last night and some other video I've been sitting on for quite a while that I want to reference due to this, some postings about the lawsuit against me. Unfortunately, we just get this great breaking news, not great, bad, terrible, horrible news about the Charlie Kirk, the assassination, that death, the terrorism. And I see a lot of people are reacting, a lot of people are reacting on both sides. The majority are like me, we don't want to see it, we don't want to fuel it, we don't, we don't want no part of this. That's the majority, the silent majority. I see them commenting, most of us are condemning it, we condemn it no matter which side it is on, but some people are already politicizing this on both sides. And they're the extremists and it's just, it's just gross. Don't politicize violence. Been happening on both sides. You can't point at the Democrats or the Republicans because both sides have had extremists doing violence over the last like five, 10 years and it's ramping up. And we, there's a list, there's a list, there's an official list and both sides have had extreme nutcase violence happening. This is, it's horrible. This is horrible. This guy had a family, he's got kids who probably watched this. This is a sad day for our country. So no more politics. This is why I don't even talk about politics anymore. You know, I think a lot of you people out there on the left and the right, the Democrats and the Republican, I got accused of being a Republican and a Democrat now. I'm neither. I worked on one Republican Party campaign. I've only worked on one campaign in my life officially. It was a Republican campaign. It was like 15 years ago, maybe 20, maybe 25. It was a long time ago. John Cunningham, he was running as a GOP Congressman against Ed Markey. I helped him on the cannabis stuff. The only campaign I ever worked on. I am not a Republican. I'm not a Democrat either. I've never been a Democrat. I've never checked the box as a Democrat. The only party I ever enrolled in was the United Independent Party. And so that's, that's where I am. And I want to see the violence end on both sides because I've seen it on both sides. There are people get, there were some Democratic state legislators that were murdered. There's been a judge, her judge, a judge, her kid got killed. There's so many nutcases out there and it's scary. It is truly scary. And what happened today, just man. The way I look at politics, instead of picking a side and getting their merchandising, getting all merged out, you know, the way I look at it? I don't let these politicians use me. I use them. I use Democrats, I use Republicans, I use Libertarians, I use whoever is in office that can help me for causes we care about. Look at Karen Reed, Mike Conley, Democrat, helped us. Republican, Nick Bulow, Nick, Nick, remember Nick, the state rep, helped us. That's what I do. I get these, these politicians to help our causes. I don't care if it's a Democrat or Republican. That's what people need to start thinking about. Stop buying into one side against the other. I gotta hate these people. Because it's destroying our country and these politicians on both sides are gassing you up to go kill each other for their benefit. So they get your votes, so they get your money. So that, that's where I am today. I just, we need to stop it. We need to stop. All right. I want to play Canton Select Board. I got, yeah, I got, I'm going to put a poll up. I finally got my new glasses, right? I got two pairs. I got one pair of sunglasses. I didn't go overboard. I was going to probably get three, but I know I'm, I'm having some eye work done maybe. And I'll end up getting new, these glasses probably aren't going to be here that long, but I decided to get a prescription sunglasses this time because I definitely want to focus on saving my eyes, especially for the show too and being outside. I'm dog, dog walking, then I'm in front of the, the screen all the, all the time. So I definitely got some sunglasses and I got some regular glasses. Now, since I have one bad eye, as you know, and I'm always looking at the phone funny. I figured I would try the sunglasses on the show tonight. It feels comfortable. I want to know what you think. Is it too distracting? Is it blind money mic too distracting with, with the sunglasses? Or do you prefer the new glasses, the new regular? I'm gonna, I'm gonna try them both for a little bit and I'm going to put a poll up during the Canton Select Board session here that we're going to play. And you let me know. I'll, I'll go with you. Whatever you decide. Do you want these glasses on? Do you, do you like to see blind money mic looking at the phone with one eye? Or do you want the sunglasses on? Which do you prefer tonight? Tonight only. I'll leave it up to you for tonight. All right. And I also got to say, there's a big show tonight. We're going to redirect you at 8:00 PM. There's a fundraiser with Churney Nan Gallagher. She's gone over the documents for the defamation, defamation suit against me. I'm interested to see what Churney has to say on a live show tonight, reading the defamation suit and especially our response to it, our motion to dismiss. That's going to be at 8:00 PM at Calling All Beings. We're going to redirect you tonight. And I'm going to play some video. People kept asking me in a, in a discussion I had, the last discussion about my lawsuit. Who's suing you? I have video tonight of the dude suing me. When he called in to a Boston zoning hearing for a cannabis license, a community, whatever we call it, community outreach meeting. You're going to hear him and his brother and you're going to get an idea of what's actually, what started this lawsuit and how I came into it. And we're going to play that tonight. You're going to hear his voice. You're going to see who, you're going to at least hear who this guy is and get a, get an idea. We're going to play that tonight as well. So we got a lot today. You want to find out who's suing me? You're going to get a little bit more of a taste of it tonight. But let's play the Canton Community Television. Canton Community Television, thank you so much. They're the best. They, they do these select board meetings. We really appreciate their coverage. You can find it at cantoncommunitytv.org. And we're just going to play the beginning of the select board meeting where last night they had a public comment and I don't even know what was said there. I have no idea. Didn't get a chance to watch it today. So we're going to watch that and we'll put up the poll and then we'll come back. We'll come back and you let me know about the sunglasses and then we're going to, you're going to get to listen to the guy who's suing me. We get it up? All right. We got it up. Let's do this.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting of August 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM at the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. This evening's proceedings will be recorded by Canton Community Television and it will have later viewing dates, but it's being recorded live now. This evening also, Select Board Member Mike Lawfrin is on vacation. He won't be joining us. And Select Board Member Trish Boydin has a wedding in Italy for her daughter. So we wish them both well. As we go forth, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a gentleman that the town of Canton has lost in the past week, Mr. Charles Chacamondo. Chacamondo served this town for many, many years on the zoning board of appeals and on the building renovation committee. I myself had the pleasure of serving with him and he was truly be missed. He is responsible for multiple buildings that have been done in this town from Metropolitan Rink to the pool, the senior center, expansions to both elementary schools. He sat on the porch through its, all its hearings on the zoning board of fields. He will be truly missed. I consider him a very close friend and I will miss him dearly.
Damn it. I don't have much time today, tonight either. So this, this stinks. Let me find it. I thought that was the most recent. You're right. It's not the most recent. Let's make sure they even have it up. Sometimes they don't have it up. Man, hopefully they have it up. Let's find it. One second. I'm going to look. All right. Let me just do a search on their website. Now I'm, oh, they have it up. All right. Hold on. Let's, let's get the right meeting up. Sorry about that. Thank you for letting me know in the chat. I got it. There we go. Make sure you vote in the poll.
Another note, Select Board Member Mike Lawfrin will not be here tonight. He is out of state. So he'll be returning soon. The first thing on the agenda is the public comment and I'll have to do a brief statement before we get going. Before I do that, is there any other announcements from the board? Seeing none. Public comment of this meeting is an opportunity to listen to the residents' feedback and concerns. However, it is not meant to be a question and answer format. There'll be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and town you live in. Your address is not required. I would ask all members of the audience be respectful of each speaker as well of each other. Anyone that does not wish to speak or is unable to do so due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review in consideration. That being said, we will start public comment.
Brenda Sweeney, Canton, my humble opinion. We want you to clean house. Our retired Chief Rafferty is being sued for running over a pedestrian on her own time. She tried to shift liability to our town to save her multimillion dollar houses, claiming she was on call 24/7 and always got called to the scene of major incidents. During the biggest crime this century in our town, where was our chief? Where was our deputy chief? And how about that guy passing out red solo cups in his PJs and then promptly going right back to bed? You can't have your cake and eat it too. Show up when you're being sued, but don't bother when a fellow officer is killed. She's still hiding the ball about who high-tailed it out of the Sally Port. We're not safe when an officer would rather skirt responsibility and doesn't care about justice. Yet here she is working our streets with a gun and a badge. Retired No Probable Cause Gallagher. A fellow officer wearing no coat and missing a shoe found dead on the lawn at the house of another cop on the fugitive task force, yet Gallagher refused to investigate that house. He already knew everything inside was hunky dory. He refused to consider exigent circumstances. Instead, he put on a robe, became the judge and denied a search warrant that day. A puppet whose actions we'll never trust again. Yet here he is, working our streets with a gun and a badge. Retired Predator Wade, he traded sexual favors for tickets. His punishment? Gifted the night shift. Who's safe when a predator isn't held accountable and roams freely among us? Yet here he is, working our streets with a gun and a badge. Retirement doesn't absolve them. They shouldn't be working our streets. They betrayed their oath, the badge, their fellow officers and the citizens. Their presence is a poison this town doesn't need. Removing that poison from our force would send a powerful message to our officers, our citizens and any candidates for the chief's position. Among our active force, Canton has upstanding officers who honor their oath and strive to protect and serve. That's the blue we back every single minute of every single day. Unfortunately, we also have a few that don't care about their oath and abuse their power, residual poison. Like the one who refused to help the citizens worried about a serial killer. "Google it," he said, pissed because they had the audacity to bother him. Unbridled arrogance, belligerence coupled with negligence. Protect and serve aren't part of his vernacular, an attitude enabled by years of poor leadership. Citizens are on the receiving end of that toxic attitude and our decent officers suffer as a result. That behavior is exactly what the new chief needs to fix, one way or the other. We'll be back. We hope poison control shows up in the meantime.
Each. Shane of Canton. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. The first one is, I don't know if the Select Board is aware or the Chair is aware, there's a real deficit in minutes posted on the town's website relative to the agendas. I don't know if you're aware. There's, I guess there's like 53 committees and then if you go to the posted minutes, there's 33 committees listed, which means there's 20 committees that don't even have a spot to post minutes. And then the second thing is I've been looking for minutes to certain committees that I find important and they're not there. And in the past, I've gone to the clerk to get them. She's actually had me call people's homes to ask the chairs of some of the committee members to ask for minutes, you know, and it's, it's, they should just be posted. They should just be posted, just like the Select Board Minutes, the Finance Committee and the Planning Board. So I'm just wondering if the Select Board could just evaluate that and maybe put it as an agenda item to talk about and try to figure out a way to address that issue?
Well, this isn't a, I can't answer those questions, but we'll listen to your comments, please.
So I'm just putting that out there. The second thing, I have three. The second one is, I saw in the paper about the Select Board Goals. I think it was talked, talked about with the, with Town Council. I went to the agenda of that meeting and it's, they're not shown there. And I know the agenda's not all the details, but I'm wondering if you, if you'd make those public, the Select Board Goals that were established? I know you can't answer. And the third question is, well, that can wait. Okay. So it's two questions. Thank you.
Okay. I would advise you to bring those comments to the executive branch and they will look into that. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none. That'll be the end of public comment. Mr. Allen.
All right. First up on tonight's agenda is the Conservation Department update with Regan Jamison here to talk about.
Good evening, Regan. Pleasure to see you.
So my, so Charlie invited the department heads to give updates. My understanding is that you were interested in getting updates from the department heads and I'm the lucky one who gets to go first.
It's it from the Canton Select Board.
Get it out of the way.
Shit. Means I got rid of the video I needed to go to next. It's been one of those days just completely. Yeah. So the poll right now, the poll is about my glasses. I got two new pairs of glasses. One is sunglasses. I finally like got the, the high-end prescription sunglasses because I feel like I need them with my eyes right now. I'm having some eye issues. And I'm obviously outside a lot in the sunlight and then in front of the computer screen. Somebody suggested even tonight, you know, recently that I should get some kind of anti-glare on the computer screen. That's probably the next thing I'm going to do. But tonight I have two pairs of glasses and I'm asking you, which would you rather see me in, in the poll? It's up to you which one I'll, it looks like the regular glasses are winning right now. So I'm going to put the regular glasses. Unless you change it, unless you change, if I, if I notice that sunglasses are in the lead, I'll put them all back on tonight. That's the poll. All right. So I decided to play this video today because the video I'm playing is because the lawsuit that has been filed against me for defamation. It's, it's really kind of bound me not being able to say a lot, knowing what I know and just, you know, how much money we're putting in and we're at this point where we could actually get it dismissed. The prudent thing would be just to continue to shut my mouth about it. But if you noticed a few weeks ago, I did a show and tonight I'm doing a show. And the real reason why is because, like I said, like I said, freedom of speech isn't free. And I'm willing to throw down, I've thrown down a lot of money and I see a lot of you were supporting and I know that you want to know much more about why I'm being sued, who's suing me? And I'm also seeing a narrative get seeded where I saw this being posted by this one whack job. I'll use that since, since, you know, this person has earned it, you know, because they turn around and say that I'm racist because of the lawsuit that's been filed against me. Because the people who are suing me started a nonprofit. There are two, two brothers who are black dudes who have been arrested a lot in the past. Unlike a lot of the folks that we wanted to champion with the cannabis, you know, we wanted to champion people who've been arrested for cannabis specifically, not other crazy things like these two guys have been allegedly arrested for. And basically they were, their nonprofit got funding for, from the mayor of Boston through the city of Boston. They got a huge grant and they're supposed to be social equity. They're supposed to empower, they're supposed to champion black businesses, minority owned businesses, women owned businesses. They're supposed to help the underdog. And what was happening is that a lot of the black businesses were saying, these guys aren't helping us. They're actually hurting us and they're actually fighting against us. And there was a woman who was, you know, basically the, the city and the state, basically the way they set the licensing up for the cannabis dispensaries, especially at the beginning, it did pit people against each other. And instead of being this nonprofit called The Big Hope Project that got the funding from the city of Boston, instead of you know, not getting involved and pinning dispensary groups against each other, they chose sides. And I believe that they chose sides based on their own interests. And what you're going to see in this instance is there are two co-defendants who are being sued with me. CS Amora, who was actually successfully opened a dispensary in Cambridge, which I recently believe may have closed unfortunately because of the industry. And CS Amora and this other guy, Mar Stringer, and these guys are both black men, black business owners in the cannabis space, trying to open, trying to get deals, trying to get dispensaries open and get products on shelves that they have. And they're hustlers and they're guys that don't have a lot of money. Chief CS Amora, also known as Chief, is a military guy, a former vet, you know, a veteran. He's a, he's a great guy. And Mar Stringer is the other one and they both have wives. And one of the wives, CS Amora's wife, went for a dispensary license in the city of Boston and the neighborhood of Alston Brighton area. And this group that should have been representing her and her 51% owned minority woman business, they went up against her and they testified at a outreach, a community outreach meeting that was held by the city of Boston. It was held on the city of Boston's YouTube channel. And that's what I'm playing here. This is actually a government hearing that any dispensary applicant that gets to a certain point in a city or town has to do a community outreach meeting. And I believe this was during COVID, so it was a virtual meeting. And what you're going to see is that his group of people, the guy who's suing me and his brother, and the brother is no longer a part of the nonprofit. You know why? The brother's no longer a part of the nonprofit because allegedly he was arrested for child rape under age 14. So these two guys testify against a woman-owned, minority-owned cannabis business that they're supposed to be helping, that the city of Boston gave them money for, that the state of Massachusetts gave them the blessing. And instead, they're fighting against it. It pickensides based on what benefits them the most. And because I supported the small guy or who are African Americans, by the way, I'm being called racist. I mean, make it make sense. Make it make sense to me. So let's just play, let's play the video. I want you to see this guy speak. I want you to get what's going on here. And this woman, she never got to open her dispensary. And CS Amora and Chief Samora, now his wife, Leah Samora. These are the people I want in the industry. They're people we know, we like them, we trust them. They've had a good reputation for a long time. They weren't allowed to open because they didn't kiss the ring of the people who ran the local governments. Let's put it that way. Who have criminal records. Now I'm being sued by them because they want to shut us up. See what that says? Boston City TV. Let's watch this.
Oh, good evening, folks. My name is Connor Newman. I'm the mayor's liaison to the Alston Brighton neighborhood. Thanks for joining us tonight. I'm here to do it tonight to facilitate the statutorily required.
I want to say something right here, right off the bat. This started in the city of Cambridge. I was there for it. There were two sides on this. There were black people fighting on both sides of the city of Boston about the cannabis regulations for social equity. On one side, you have the Big Hope Crew. It was really MRCC back then, but they kind of morphed and they turned into the Big Hope Project. And that group of people in the very beginning, I actually supported them. I thought they had the right thing in mind. I thought they were doing the thing for the right, you know, the right thing for the right reasons. And basically, if you look back on it and look at it, it's just a philosophical difference. The Big Hope Project side wanted the big dispensaries to pay the city of Cambridge into a fund. And then the city of Cambridge would figure out which small businesses to fund. Now the small businesses that were trying to open in Cambridge, the Samoras, for instance, they said, that's, that's, doesn't make sense for us because it's going to take us too long. By the time the, the money gets to the fund and the, and the city figures out how to allocate the fund and then they figure out how to distribute the money, we're all going to be out of business. We need money now. And these dispensaries, because we've been bringing up this issue and they all want to get licensed themselves and they know that they have to actually help the small guys first, they want to fund us now. They want to give us some funding. They want to actually give us some support now. And they're realizing it's not just good for businesses, it's good for their brands. And it's not only good for their brands, it's the right thing to do. And this guy, Mike Ross, on the top right, you're going to see he, this guy is a serious major attorney. And he's working for CS Amora in the bottom and it's not for money. He works for Prince Lobel. Mike Ross is a former Boston City Councilor. He ran for mayor, did, had a pretty good campaign. I wish he had won that mayor race. I like Mike Ross. Mike Ross is a major player in cannabis, Prince Lobel, the biggest dispensaries, a lot of the biggest dispensaries in Boston especially, used Mike Ross and Prince Lobel to get opened because he's a great attorney. And he made his bones. He made his money on that business. And now you can tell in this instance, he's trying to help Leah Samora, who doesn't have a lot of resources. He wants to help her open and it's more of a pro bono charity thing. You can tell he really, he's into this. He's in it for the right reasons. And he's at this hearing to support Leah Samora and to get her a license. And you're also going to hear that Leah Samora has gotten support and partial ownership, given partial ownership, a partnership with B Real from Cypress Hill. Now Leah Samora owns 51%. She's a minority black woman that owns 51%. She's a majority owner of this dispensary. And she's partners with B Real. And she's got some other partners with money too, which is the perfect scenario. And it's what the state set up. It's what the state wanted for economic empowerment. And it's how there are just a couple of women-owned, black-owned dispensaries in Boston. It's with this model, this economic empowerment model. And it's what The Big Hope Project should be supporting. But they're not supporting it because Leah and her husband didn't go along with their plans in Cambridge at city council when they testified. And they also didn't like that there's a competing dispensaries that's more aligned with their group. So the social equity nonprofit that's supposed to empower minorities and women is trying to shut this woman from opening up. And you're going to hear it tonight. And you're going to hear Mike Ross and And you're going to hear Mike Ross, an attorney, a very serious person at the end, tell the truth about what's actually going on here. And this is why I'm being sued, what Mike Ross says at the end here is basically the real, the reason that they came after us. They don't go after Mike Ross because he's an attorney.
Cannabis community outreach meeting, uh, this applicant, uh, Dr. Green Thumbs is interested in opening a recreational, uh, retail cannabis dispensary. Um, to be operated at 144 Harvard Ave in Austin. Before we start, I'd like to go over some expectations for tonight's meeting, having participated in multiple meetings of this kind. I know this can be a sensitive topic, I want to make it clear that no decisions are being made tonight. And at no time will it be acceptable to be disrespectful to anyone during the meeting.
I am going to step off for one second, but I will be right back, especially when, uh, the person who's suing me speaks. And you know what else you're going to see at the end of this hearing? The meeting was shut down because of threats at the end. Not only did she not get to open and she's got a partnership with B Real and a location and she's got everything lined up, the, the cities like onboard. The people in the city are onboard, this meeting and the threat, the alleged threats that happened at the end of it, derailed her from ever opening.
Everyone is entitled to their opinion, there's no right or wrong opinion, we are here tonight to try to collect as many comments and statements and questions for this proposal. I am not here to facilitate a debate amongst neighbors or relitigate state legislation. I ask that all questions be directed to the applicant and myself only. The applicant will answer all questions related to the proposal to the best of their ability. And I will answer questions specific to the city process. If I am unable to, or the applicants are unable to answer a question tonight, we'll follow up with you after the meeting and get you that information. This is an open comment period, meaning if you do not get called on tonight, or if you think of a question that has not been answered. All you need to do is reach out to our office and we will work to get you that information. My contact information has been on the flyer that you received and I will also drop it, uh, towards the end of the night in the chat. So with that, I think we've covered the base topic here. Uh, Leah and Michael, turn it over to you guys, just have you run through a presentation and folks will have ample time to go through, uh, questions and comments, thank you.
Terrific, um, well, hello everyone, my name is Mike Ross, I am an attorney of the law firm of Prince Lobel. And I am, uh, the attorney for Dr. Green Thumbs Austin. Uh, and, uh, representing and with me tonight for Dr. Green Thumbs is Leah Samora. Uh, Leah Samora is the majority owner of Dr. Green Thumbs Austin, she is an equity applicant. Uh, which means that she is entitled to the expedited, um, equity program that the Boston Cannabis Board uh, has, uh, uh, available to it in order to allow, um, fairness within the equity. Uh, where, uh, where in 50% of all applicants must meet the equity requirements uh, in order for a non-equity applicant to go forward. Uh, that's the, uh, program in a nutshell. Uh, Leah is also a lifelong resident of the city of Boston, she's a friend, she's an expert in cannabis. Uh, and, uh, many other, uh, areas, I just want maybe have you say a quick hello and then I'll, I'll pull up the, uh, the presentation, that's all right.
Uh, yeah, hi everyone, I'm Leah Samora, like Mike said, um, born and raised in Boston, specifically Dorchester. Um, I guess, let's see. Uh, Mike, you want me to speak about myself right now, you want to wait till the presentation?
We can wait till we get to that section, I'll give you a second to come up with some witticisms. And, uh, let me share my screen here. You never know what's going to happen. Okay, okay, here we go, uh, so here we are. So yes, the, the plan is, uh, for a dispensary, adult use dispensary at 144 Harvard Avenue. Um, but what, before I get into this, I kind of want, I know that there's, there's been a lot of interest in Austin, you know, in particular. Uh, with regard to, um, uh, dispensaries like this one. Um, I know Mayflower is already open, there was another applicant that was, uh, in front of the city in January. Um, and there's, there's probably others, um, in the Amity area. Austin, obviously, uh, it's a dense section of the city, um, there are more people in Austin than there are in um, other sections of the city, uh, Austin was a favorable, uh, neighborhood as it relates to cannabis in terms of the vote, uh, voted in the, really the highest numbers of, uh, uh, the pro cannabis vote, if you will. But, you know, beyond all of that, I just wanted to try to put some, some logic to, to why there are so many different cannabis dispensaries. As opposed to just one cannabis dispensary that sells on this, it took me a while to really understand this too. Even though I'm a lawyer that does this work. Um, and, and it really has, has more to do with, with, um, these places being not like a liquor store, really, like a liquor, I, I think everyone, I used to think of it like, well, maybe it's like a liquor store, you go in and you get the kind of what you want and then you leave, you can get some wine, you can get some tequila, you can get different brands, whatever you're getting, and then you go. But it's not like that, it really isn't. Each one of these stores has a different vibe, a different brand, a different product. Yeah, there's some overlap of products, there is, at some of the stores. But in this store in particular and other stores, there are only products you can get at this one location. So rather than look at this like a, um, a liquor store, where I, I've started to look at these places like more like coffee shops. We all have the coffee shop we like to go to, you know, some people go to Dunkin Donuts, some people go to Starbucks. Some people go to other independent, uh, places or Pete's Coffee, all these different places. But they only sell that brand of coffee in those locations and they're all over the place, especially Dunkin Donuts.
Seen a few comments that came up, uh, I'm going to try to answer them. And I hope, uh, people do step up tonight on the go, you know, give send go, our defense fund. Because it's not free, free speech is not free here, not in this state. Basically, you know, let's, is one of the questions. Well, first of all, I wear my sunglasses at night, but I did take them off because you guys voted differently, you didn't want to see them, I took them off. And I, my new glasses, I want, I hope you like my new glasses. Angel says, I don't understand why they're suing you. It's long and complicated and I don't want to say too much, but I'm going to tell you, I'm, I'm just going to try to keep it as simple as possible. This woman Leah Samora, her husband. CS Amora. And another gentleman named Mar Stringer. And Mar Stringer's wife Cynthia, uh, Marmont, all four of them, I featured them on shows that I did. Because I felt like there was some truth to what they were saying. That these nonprofits were using their government connections and their government funding to favor certain corporations that were funding them. And they weren't being honest, I felt. And somebody said, how can somebody sue you for a million dollars if they only make $5 an hour? Uh, he sued me for half a million dollars. And the facts are this, the city of Boston gave them $50,000. That their nonprofit got $50,000 from Michelle Wu, there's a picture of Michelle Wu sit with, with the big check from the city of Boston. The state of Massachusetts, uh, like gave them special status in the program. They went around to the big dispensary corporations and did white label products and took money from them. Do you see what's going on in my view? This is my opinion and this is what the four of them are basically saying is that if you don't go along with this little group of people with their nonprofit and kick back money. Then they're going to show up at your city, city events and they're going to try to shut you down. And not only that, there was a fistfight. There was a violent, a violent fistfight at a cannabis event, recorded on video, I played it on my show. This is why I am being sued because I told the truth. I allowed it to be exposed, nobody else was talking about it. And during this, all of this stuff is coming out, right? Mar Stringer has been charged with assault and battery against these guys and the video shows, in my opinion, that they had circled and surrounded him, that they approached him. That they initiated contact, to me, that shows intent. And then a fistfight broke out. And Mar Stringer, the guy that was encircled by three guys, he got charged. Eventually charges got dismissed, but his lawyer looked into the two non-found, the, the two brothers who were the co-founders of this Big Hope Project. The guy you're going to hear in a minute on this video. And both of them have violent histories. Or really problematic criminal, let's just say the problematic criminal history, not for cannabis. Uh, the one guy who's suing me allegedly has, uh, a sealed record, expunged or whatever, uh, for gun. Violent attempted murder is what I saw and that came from Mar Stringer's criminal offense attorney. Uh, the other brother more recently got arrested for child rape under 14, he is no longer a co, he is no longer a, uh, a founder, they, they kicked him out of the nonprofit. So there were two brothers, one brother recently got arrested for child rape, he's no longer the founder. He's not suing me, it's the other brother who's suing me. You're going to hear both brothers in this video tonight. The first guy who speaks and the last guy who speaks. So this is what's going on, I expose political corruption. Kickback schemes. People who are supposed to promote black business, small business, not doing that. Here's Leah Samora, a woman that owns 51% of her cannabis dispensary, she lives in Dorchester, we've known her for decades, we knew her husband. And she's being blocked because they don't like who she's doing business with, her business partners who are funding her and they don't like her. And the reason they don't like her is because she didn't go along with their nonprofit games. They wanted to run the money, they wanted the dispensaries to send the money to their group and then they decide which dispensaries to fund. And they've done that with the state equity program too, because one of their co-patriots runs that state equity program now. And you think they gave any money to Leah Samora or her husband? Nope. Do you see what's going on here, folks? I exposed it. That's why I'm being sued. I got, I'm being sued, one of the counts against me is for asking, uh, the, one of the wives of, of the, one of my co-defence, I, I asked her a question on my show. I didn't even make a statement, there wasn't any factual, no factual statement made, I asked a question. And they're trying to sue me for that. Freedom of speech isn't free unless you have the money to defend it, that's what I've been doing, I hope people support me in that. And so what happened too to this nonprofit, when we exposed it, apparently their money dried up. Apparently none of the corporations wanted to be associated with them when they found out one of the brothers got arrested for child rape under 14. And the other brother, both of them, both the brothers got in a violent fight that was recorded at the Heinz Convention Center. None of them wanted to support that anymore when my show was exposing it, that, that's what they're trying to say. And the truth of it is, I don't think that's, I don't even think that's real because other people noted it in the community. You know, other people saw what happened. People that they were associated with saw it before I even reported it. People knew what was going on with this group. But he, it's funny that he, they want to blame it on my show, but they don't want to talk about his brother's child rape. If you look at all the documents that they filed, they'll never mention the brother's been arrested for child rape under 14. You think that made it cost them their funding? They want to pretend it's what I said on my show versus the fact that the brother got arrested for child rape under age 14. They want to not talk about this, this video that I'm playing tonight. We're going to play the video tonight, let's watch this video, they don't want to, none of this video is in there complaining against us, I wonder why.
I hope that kind of, that's how I've been thinking of it.
You'll also hear one of my co-defendants call in on this tonight. So basically what you're going to hear in this video is one of the, one of the co-founders who is suing me. You're going to hear one of my co-defendants, Mar Strayer who calls in support, and at the end, you're going to hear the brother who used to be a co-funder at that point, he was a co, co-founder at that point of the Big Hope Project. Now he is no longer, they, they kicked him out of the organization because like I said, he's been arrested and, uh, being tried for, uh, apparently child rape under age 14.
About it, why are there so many of these everywhere, right, opening instead of just one? That's how I like to think of it, and we have a very unique operation, not just in terms of what we're selling, and we'll get into that in a second. And, um, and the team that we have behind this, which is very unique, but also Leah. So Leah, I hope I killed enough time here to have you come up with a witticism. Turning it back to you, I think you're muted.
Thank you, Mike, um, let's see, alright, so yeah, here I am. Um, I'm Leah Samora, like Mike said, um, CEO and majority owner of Dr. Green Thumb. Hopefully to be here in, um, Austin, I'm a little bit about myself, born and raised in, um, Boston, uh, grew up in Dorchester, purchased my own home in Mattapan. Uh, let's see, for the past 20 plus years before I got into this industry, I worked in a nonprofit, helping, um, or not helping, teaching adults as a workforce development, uh, instructor and technology trainer. Helping adults gain better employment, um, or better skills to get better employment. Um, I, um, I also am the, um, I'm the first cannabis infused, black owned, uh, product in Massachusetts. My husband and I created a product through Sarah Naturals, um, accelerator program. I'm very proud of that, that we are in over, this has 25 stores, but we're in like 60% of stores here in Massachusetts. Um, I am also, um, director of education for a, um, educational program, cannabis education program in, um, Alst, uh, not Austin, Rosendale. Um, soon to open here at the, um, at the end of the year and let me see, I mean, Jesus, I think that's all, like you said, economic empowerment applicant and also social equity applicant and, um, yeah, yeah. There you go, Mike, I think I said it.
Well, we'll cut you back in, uh, this won't be the last thing you have to say, but thank you.
Yeah.
And Leah and I have been talking to a lot of people in the community and, uh, you know, hopefully get to know more and more of you, uh, as we go through this process. Um, this, uh, I mentioned that
Imagine that they didn't want B Real from Cypress Hill in Alston Brighton, where the music scene is in Boston. This is so disgusting on so many levels, on so many freaking levels. We could have had B Real at the center of the local music scene in Boston, where all the musicians live. And they denied this, they denied this because they don't like, they don't like the applicant because she didn't go along with their nonprofit shakedown games.
This is a very unique, um, product that we're selling here at this particular facility, so one of the, one of the products, one of the collaborations here is Louis Fries, uh, he's of Cypress Hill, this, uh, I'm sure many of you know who he is. He's very active in the cannabis space. Um, he has, uh, and he, and one of his products, one of his, uh, one of the things he worked on was this Dr. Green Thumb brand, uh, that was very, that's extremely popular on the west coast. And the idea is to, uh, create market and sell that product here in Massachusetts at this store, um, and it would be a, it'll, it'll be a, and then, you know, um, Leah's, uh, has a relationship with uh, Mr. Fries and, and I think she would bring him here and they would do music and things and activities and, uh, right, isn't that right Leah?
Yes, that's right.
We would, we would do, we would try to enrich some of the existing art programs with
Yeah, so the, yeah, so one of the plans is to, um, help activate or reactivate the music scene, um, in Austin, uh, with, um, B Real from Cypress Hill.
And, you know, B Real is, um, uh, yeah, better known as B Real, sorry. B Real is also a part owner of this facility too, he, he, uh, owns a portion of this facility with, uh, Leah.
Yeah, and I should mention that, uh, it'll be the first woman, uh, I'll be like the first woman, um, that he has partnered up with.
Alright. Uh, these are some of the other partners, uh, you heard Leah mention Sarah Naturals, uh, that, which she participated in with, um, uh, and they helped through her, their accelerator program and they helped her get her product to market, which is this, um, really innovative product that she, uh, and her husband worked on creating, uh, that, um, is a wellness product. Um, so here's the site, 144 Harvard Ave, you all know where it is. Um, it's about 5,000 square feet, um, retail. Uh, the thing that this site has that we think is extremely unique is, um, it's, is the parking, I'd say, is, is, well, I mean, it has a lot of unique, and it's a great site where it's located and um, the fact that we're able to bring deliveries through the rear of the building. Um, the fact that we're able to bring deliveries through the rear of the building. Uh, and have some parking for our employees through the rear of the building is a real bonus. I mean, to find a site like this in the middle of anywhere. Much less Austin, where you actually have this type of resource will allow us to operate better uh and put together a, just a better quality experience. Our employees will not be taking up parking spaces in the um, in the metered parking spaces on Harvard. Um, they will be parked in the back uh to the extent that they even drive here. Our goal is to hire.
I'm gonna speed this up a little bit.
From Austin and uh, and Brighton and um, we have committed to hiring um all of our employees from Boston. Um, and um, you know, we, we, we are going to incent our employees to get to our facility uh using the MTA or biking or walking. Uh, and we'll be doing that through uh progressive transit demand management initiatives to incent that. Uh, we're proposing hours of operations from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Uh, we think this will bring a lot of activity to the street. Uh, in terms of our customer parking, we think it doesn't make sense for them to park in the backyard. It's a real tight alleyway. But for our repeating and returning deliveries and our repeating and returning employees, we think that they can navigate and make better use of this space back there. There's also space back here for bicycles. Um, there's space in front uh for bike racks. Uh, and like, like we said, we're gonna, we're gonna incent our employees to get on their bicycles. The additional parking I referenced is literally right across the street um on uh, on Glenville. We have 10 uh exclusive dedicated parking spaces for um, for us, for, for our customers. Um, there's a lot of repeat business in this business. So to the extent people are driving to our um facility. Every time they come here, they're gonna know that they will always have a parking space down on Glenville Ave. And then they can shop in the neighborhood. Um, that's the whole idea to make it really easy for people to come into our facility and by extension um to uh, to come to the broader community. There's also, as you all know, the municipal lot that has parking uh as well, but we're certainly not relying on that as our exclusive parking. Uh, we've been able to identify dedicated parking as I just mentioned. This is the floor plan. Um, so yeah, all in, you're looking at 5,000 square feet, but broken up. You're looking at a much smaller retail area, um dedicated um point of sales uh machines off here to the back of the building and to the back of the floor area. And then in the back of the building, this shaded gray area, this is where, uh, this is just where deliveries and employees will go. This is not available to the public. So it's really a closed loop system for deliveries and um, and uh, the front is how, you know, right on, right off the sidewalk is where um our customers will, will um, will approach. Uh, to get, to get in there. We don't think there's gonna be, there haven't been a lot, there haven't been a lot of lines um in, you know, I mean, it seems like that was like very two, three years ago. Uh, but you know, you never know. If there are lines, we are well equipped to handle all of the line uh within the building itself. You won't see lines hanging out the sidewalk. This is a very large uh entry vegetable here, here with, with queuing um enabled and it will allow people to uh, to uh, to get in quickly and, and exit quickly. They'll come in through one entrance door, they'll walk into this area, nine times out of 10, they're gonna know exactly what they want. Um, I had a client recently tell me that 80% of their orders are online, 80%. I used, I, I heard that the number was closer to 50%. But the reason why that is, is that a lot of the products vary and you never know what they're gonna have because. You know, in the end, this is agriculture and certain things are, are being grown and processed and certain things are not. Um, and so um, and, and you have a very, you know, not always because you have a lot of people who are trying this for the first time, but you have a very informed customer base. So they, they know most, most of the time what they want. So they're gonna go online and check it and we're gonna make sure that we schedule them to come in at a time that's not the peak of the peak of the peak hour. So if we can bump them a little bit away from the peak hour, we will. And for that reason, we don't think we're gonna have any kind of lines and we'll be able to manage the entire intake uh of our, of our expected customers. You know, we're highly regulated. So one of the things we're in is in the compliance and nuisance prevention game. I mean, that's a big part of our, of the job. We're gonna be hiring people whose sole responsibility is to secure the facility, secure the exterior, secure the interior.
Skip ahead a little bit.
Austin Village Main Street diversion is, is probably already mentioned, all of our employees will be bought some residence.
So basically they're just going through the whole business plan, safety, parking, all of that. This is what they do with these community hosts. And she's got it all covered. And she's got a great plan. She's got the former Boston City Councilor, Mike Ross, highly respected at one of the most prestigious law firms. Not in, and not even in Boston, in the country, like, you know, this is, he's from like one of those real top law firms. And he's there to help Leah Samora. So, so far this is a good, good meeting, right? Watch what happens.
And, and, and meet with uh our employees. And not only that, we'll give you the room to do it. Um, so that's a labor.
Thanks, Mike. I just want to take a minute to recognize, we have a couple of representatives from different elected officials offices. Uh, we have Alex from State Rep Kevin Hon's office. Pamela Lee from Counselor Braden's office, the district counselor, and also Jen McGliori from State Rep Mike Moran's office. So thanks for joining us tonight. Uh, I'm gonna open up for questions and comments. Folks, if you look down below for the reactions or the ellipses, you have the option to digitally.
So you hear there, there's elected officials, their representative, their aides are watching this as it's going on. This community outreach meeting to open this dispensary for Leah Samora. In the city of Austin, here's the first public comment. Let's watch this.
Is your hand? That way I know I can call on you, that you have a question. I see we have a couple of people also calling in via phone. If you hit star three, it also digitally raises your hand. I have the ability to unmute you and call on you. Um, we did just recently have a presentation for another proposal within this vicinity. Let's keep questions and comments specific to this proposal right here at 144 Harvard Ave. That way we can focus on.
See, he already knows they're gonna get pushed back because they're, they're pitting applicants against each other. And a nonprofit that's supposed to support all minority businesses is deciding which to support and which not to, based on what? Let's listen, let's see what they say.
Presentation we start tonight. So, um, first up, Gene, Harry Gene Jacques. Like I said, I'm gonna, I'm mute you.
This is him. This is the dude who sued me.
Harry?
Oh, he's on, he's on mute. He won't come in for a bit. Harry's got Zoom problems.
Harry, can you, can you speak? All right, might have to circle back to you.
Now Leah, you can see her face. She knows what's gonna happen here. She knows that Harry's gonna pull some shit.
She sent you the request, unmute yourself. Sean, I can go ahead.
With my support, um, knowing the area, I know a lot of that block has been empty for quite some time. Um, I think a quality store front in that area would do a lot. Um, to kind of revitalize.
So, so here's a real local in the air, from the area of the Brighton area, Brighton, Austin area apparently, and he's supporting Leah Samora. Cause he doesn't have an agenda. He just wants what's best for the actual neighborhood. He doesn't have any business or association with the other dispensary group. The competing dispensary group. So this is just a regular citizen who's actually the first commenter, because Harry didn't show up when they called them. But you're gonna hear Harry in a few minutes. But this is the first, this is a real uh resident who's speaking about. I, I support Leah Samora, which any real resident that can about cannabis culture or the cannabis industry. Or even being a good neighbor would take a look and say, yeah, this is, this is a quality applicant here.
That Harvard Ave area. Um, that's been kind of hurting for a bit, uh especially for any type of retail. You know, there's plenty of restaurants coming in and going out of business. Um, and the idea that there will be some work with Austin Village Main Streets um really means a lot to me. Uh, being in the area, I know they've painted some murals that really add some beauty to the area while also decreasing the amount of graffiti. Um, so that's important to me as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Sean.
My friend Scott Madeline, he's a uh, he used to own uh Stingray Tattoo before it closed in Austin, Brighton. He's been like a big time guy at Austin Main Streets. I actually do some things with Austin Main Streets because of Scott Madeline. So I actually have some connection there as well. And that's why I know this is a real Austin Brighton guy calling in. Cause I, he know, he's talking about Austin Main Streets because that's the organization that does a lot of good things. For the businesses and the artists and the community in Austin, Brighton. And he's mentioning that Leah Samora wants to support Austin, Brighton. Main Streets because she is actually plugged in. She knows, she knows what, what, what the community actually needs support at. And that's what she wants to do. So here's a real resident saying, I support her and I'm glad that she wants to help Austin uh Brighton Main Streets. The nonprofit that actually does great work for the community.
Next, we have caller user number four with a 774 area code. I'm muting you right now with your hand raised. Caller number four. She sent you a request, unmute yourself.
Is that star three?
Yep, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Um, yeah, hi. Uh, I am a resident of Glendale Ave in Austin. My name is Hoda and I oppose the 144 Harvard Ave project that we've just heard from. Um, I heard as a lawyer talk about uh comparing uh marijuana dispensaries to cafes. And I beg to differ greatly because a lot of people use marijuana as medicine and you don't really. Go and pick your medicine based on what the vibe is. You mostly pick it based on price. And this, this place with corporate huge money coming in um, right next to um existing minority owned business. Uh, that was licensed in the same street. Um, is surely to drive them out of business. It's really like having a small TV store next to Best Buy. Who's going to have the better price? Uh, you can only guess. Um. If, if the commission's purpose is to give licenses to actual local businesses, actual. Small sized entrepreneurs coming up in the area, um, I think they should reject this uh endeavor and stick with the people who.
Uh, what I find curious is this lady, I, I didn't hear her name. I don't know who this woman is, but she's basically saying, I want a small, I want to support small local. Business, but I don't support this lady, which. She's corporate because some of her partners actually have money. I mean, oh, this is how brainwashed this nonprofit. I mean, look, listen to her. Does she sound all there? This is the only, like, there's a few callers here that I'm like, I don't think she has an agenda. I just think she's, she's been programmed. Like, I don't think she knows the facts because she sounds stupid. She sounds silly. This is a local woman. A minority owned business, 51% black owned, women owned business. She's been licensed by the state as economic empowerment. Which means she's gonna invest in her community. It's everything that you want, but you're sitting here saying she's corporate because these other guys told you it because they have it, a competing neighboring business that they're worried about opening.
Who have been here, who have been doing the work, who, the communities that have been most harmed by the war on drugs. Um, the people who, who might have been worst impacted by um this fighting marijuana madness that's been going on for decades. Um, thank you.
Connor, if I might.
Sure.
Yeah, just wanna, I mean, I, I, I think we all agree with the sentiment that there's a difference between um, you know, a local uh operator and a multi-state operator. Um, uh, in the eyes of the law, um, that this applicant, Leah Samora, who is, who could tell you a lot about uh her experience with the war on drugs. And uh can tell you a lot about uh what she's been through uh is exactly the same as the other applicant that is seeking to open also in Harvard Ave. There is no difference between Leah's application and the other applicant's application in terms of both our equity applicants. Both are 51% or in this case need to be at least 51% owned by a local operator. And that's what we are.
Um, and, and Dr. Green Thumb is not a MSO.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Operate in multiple states. As of right now, Dr. Green Thumb, the company does not operate in multiple states and I myself am not um MSO.
So I mean, the reality of what you're seeing with the industry, and I think it's important to say this, is that every applicant is going out and they're finding investors. Or they have a bank account with $2.5 million in it to do this. Most everyone is going out, they're finding money. Uh, and that's, you know, so I think. We are who we are and you know, Leah is, people in this city know Leah, she's uh, she's an extremely credible person. And to, to say that somehow she's a Best Buy is a, is an unfair characterization.
Right. Uh, David, I see.
Jay, uh, said investor community, how, Mike, give us some examples. I don't know what her business plan is, but I know when you're approved, there's certain statuses, there's certain licenses in Massachusetts. And she has a license that specifically is part of the business plan. She has to invest back in the community. And from the sounds of it, from the last person who had called in, it sounds like she, one of the things which she was in, uh, planning to invest in Austin, Brighton Main Streets. Which is a local community group that does a lot of uh events, charity events, fundraisers. They do a lot of the, you know, little festivals, the street festivals, and they, they highlight the local businesses. That's really what Austin Main Streets does. I'm sure she probably had other things in her, her plan. But that's basically part of the license. Like when you're, when you have the economic empowerment designation with the state. It, it basically gave you preferential licensing that you'd get a little bit ahead of the big boys. Really didn't happen unfortunately. Uh, and that's what the shame of this is, is like, this not like, there's not many people like Leah Samora that got through the, the gauntlet. And she could have gotten through the gauntlet. Like she could have been there, but these other folks who had a competing interest. Shit all over and you're gonna see it. They shut down her meeting. And it's all BS because every single. Economic empowerment, minority owned business, they're 51% owned by a local applicant. She owns 51%. So how is she an MSO? An MSO is a multi-state operator. They're claiming that she's a big corporation. Because she has some big money investors, but they're minority investors. They don't own the company. You know, they're just giving her a slice because they want to say, hey, we supported this small company. And they're using it against her. And it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous, especially looking back. Back then I could see how they could muddy the waters. Anyone that's actually paying attention to, to the industry and what's actually happened and what it means. To be an economic empowerment, to be a minority owned business, a woman owned business, to have 51% equity, you're, you're a small business cannabis company. Knows now how shady this wall was. Back then I don't think people quite got it. Now I think people in the industry, if they're watching this, they're saying, holy shit, that is crazy. So let's watch more of this.
Your hand is raised, sending you the unmute request. Yep, David, can you hear us? David, you just get disconnected again, David. Alright, we'll go to Harry. Well, I think it might be related. Harry, she sent you the unmute request. You can unmute yourself.
This is the dude who sued me. This is Harry.
Hello.
Lawsuit Harry.
Hey, uh, thank you for your time, everybody. I appreciate everybody. Um, you know, taking the time out of their day to talk about the very important issue today. Um, I wanna go on the record, my name is Harry Jean Jacques. I'm from Dorchester. Um, I vehemently oppose the operation on 144 Harvard Ave. I wish I could support Leah, but unfortunately I can't. Uh, this is just another case of her colluding with millionaire MSOs against um, you know, the little guy. This is a blatant.
He says she's colluding. She's colluding with MSOs. He's the one who later took money from the MSOs, right? He's the one who actually did private white labeling through his nonprofit. I mean, dude, come on. What's all the sniffing on going on too, dude? This is Harry. This is fricking Harry. The guy who's suing me.
Attempt to corrupt the system.
Corrupt the system, dude. Ha, what a fucking dude.
Um, her and her husband.
She wanted to open a business and you stopped her and didn't disclose that you have business. Did you have business? Did you have business interest in the competing business, Harry? Why did you say you did or you didn't when you're making the speech, Harry? Lawsuit Harry. I want to know who's funding your lawsuit, Harry. If you're so broke, who's funding your lawsuit, Harry? I bet it's not black people. I bet it's not a small black business funding your lawsuit. Who's funding your lawsuit to sue me, Harry?
Team, um, when they chose to go against the greater mass cannabis community and collude with Sierra Natural and Rev Clinics.
Cause Harry, you don't have what I have. You don't have an audience. You don't have funding for your community. Where did you get your money, Harry? Who's been funding you, Harry? You're not collecting small donations, right, Harry? You're getting $50,000 checks, right, Harry? So full of shit. This is the dude who's suing me. This grifter, fucking grifter.
Two years later, they're at it again. Um, she got, you know, we have uh, you know, proof of her uh working with. You know, Cookies, uh, just Green Thumb is just a poor excuse of them getting a fourth company, which is, you know, illegal. You should, you should only have three licenses according to the Commonwealth. Um. If you look at the records, uh, it has Edwin Fowler and Leah Samora as owner of the, the entity. So I think we should look at that. This is just a cheap attempt to skirt the regulations, which would be, you know, well documented according to the Boston Globe. This is just another iteration of that. Um.
So this dude is making allegations that she doesn't own 51% of her corporation with no friggin' proof of it. Looking at a corporate paper, we're gonna say, oh, there's another name on there. He has no proof that she doesn't own 51%. Making allegations at a public city of Boston outreach event. And you're supposed to be representing small, black, minority, women owned business. You're supposed to be, you should be supporting her.
So when um Cookies was trying to open up in Harvard Square with her husband's business, against her husband's business, they both, you know, opposed that very, very strongly. So I just want to know what changed? Why did she team up with them? Um, and also. And also, Leslie Hawkins joined their team and advocated for them in public and closed door meetings, which I think is a violation of the Boston Cannabis Board policy. I think someone should look into that. And thank you for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Eric. And I was gonna interrupt, but look, everyone has a right to, to, to their own opinions, but they don't have a right to their own facts. And this is not a forum, and I would suggest, and, and hope you all agree, Connor, this is not a forum for character assassinations from other applicants who are intent on seeing their application win and this application.
About that, this guy is claiming all this bullshit against me, right? This is a serious lawyer right here. Mike Ross, Prince Lobel, one of the most serious law firms in the frigging nation. What did he just say? You heard what he said. Character assassination for a competing applicant. And I'm getting sued by them? And they're claiming I assassinated their character and I defamed them? This is what their whole game was. I didn't make money off a character assassination, I don't do that. That's not what I do. Anyone who follows me knows that's not what I do. But this is what Harry does. And, and, and that's not my words. I'm going on the experience of former Boston City Councilor, well-known attorney, Mike Ross, who just said the truth, and Mike's gonna say more truth. I love Mike Ross, he's the man. Mike Ross is a good shit. And sometimes Mike has been on the other side. Like, sometimes, you know, I helped the one big dispensary group open, and then they kind of after everyone, they didn't want everyone open. So I've been on the same side of Mike and been against Mike a little bit. But Mike is a good human being. He tells the truth, he's like a bettero. You, if Mike says something, Mike Ross, you can take it to the bank. So listen to what Mike says about the dude who's suing me.
And I would just hope that we stick to the facts of why we're all here.
Yeah, I think certainly some of that language was a bit loaded, but I think.
A bit loaded.
There in relation to another site in Cambridge. I do see there's kind of, we're getting into a debate here in the comment, the chat function, which is not what it's there for, et cetera, for questions to be asked in case people don't want to raise their hand. So like I said, if we can focus specifically on one forty.
You know what's weird too, there was, there was a chat function. This is from the YouTube channel. I think I saw the video on the Boston City website with the chat. I need to see if I could find that later, because apparently at the end of this meeting and this chat, there was a, there was a chat function in this at this hearing, and at the end of the hearing, they started making threats at Leah Samora. And the meeting had to end, basically like, you know, like you would at a, a B threat, right? When you, when you threaten be in a crowded theater, that's a crime, right? When you, when you say there's a fire in a crowded theater, that's a crime. They, that's what they did. And I don't know who actually did it, but somebody from this group of people that were trying to shut her down basically made some type of threats that shut this hearing down, and you're gonna watch that at the end. And the, this is the dude, the head ring leader, Harry. He's suing me. You can hear his brother at the end, the brother who used to be the co-founder of the Big Hope Project, but is no more because apparently allegedly, according to Mar Stringer's Criminal Defense Charity, this other brother, who's no longer with Big Hope Project, was arrested, again, child grape under age fourteen.
For Harvard Ave, you know, you can proceed.
This is who Michelle Wu gave money to, mayor of Boston.
Mike, anything else you want to mention then?
No, I mean, but I reserve the right, thank you.
Okay. All right, call and user number four with the seven, seven, four number, and try this again, send you an unmute request. Seven, seven, four number. Send you a request. Yep. Call number four, seven, seven, four. Hello, you there? I think we might already heard from that person. Jill, Jill, are pressing that you unmute yourself, please go ahead. Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now, Jill, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name is Jill, I've been an Alston Brighton resident for over ten years now. I'm in strong opposition of the one forty four Harvard Ave proposal. I'm not sure what the lawyer was talking about with, they're like coffee shops, there are zoning restrictions, and you can only have so many in a certain space from each other. And there is already a minority owned shop that is doing a lot to support local artists.
Look, look, here we go. Dividing the community, this, you can tell, this is another person who seems like a well-intentioned person, who I believe is probably a liberal by the sounds of it. And she's using all the cool words, but what she actually did is she came out and testified against a black owned, women owned, minority owned business, because some other dudes wanted to open first.
And the community. And this, this is a smaller company that has said they would do more for the community instead of a big company from California. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Guys, once again, if we keep it focused on one forty four Harvard Ave, all right, the question's sent to the applicant.
How do you call it a big company from California when it's fifty one percent owned by this woman from frigging Dorchester? You know? That woman was either misled by the people who told her to say that, or she's being misleading. I think she was misled.
And either myself regarding the community process, but we focus to be on one forty four Harvard Ave.
I do want to answer the, the question about the buffer zone. But I, I will point out that it's very unfortunate that this is becoming a attempt to put one business interest in front of the other. This is not a company from California. This is a company that's fifty one percent owned by Leah Samora. The other people are investors and they're investing in individual capacity, and that information is publicly available. In terms of the buffer zone, the, so my only point with the coffee shops is that why are there, you know, so many? And why is there a reason to have so many? It's come up before, but I do not deny this is in the buffer zone, as is the other applicant, one seventeen Harvard Ave. They're both in the buffer zone of Mayflower and the Dismas, which was open two, two years ago, three years ago. Two thousand sixteen, permitted, two thousand, it has been open for a couple of years as a medical facility. And they're in the process of opening their adult facility. And the CCC, I mean, the BCB, the Boston Cannabis Board, has said that they will allow for permutations within that half mile between entities. And indeed, they have throughout the city. They've specifically said that in the case of, as here, and the other applicant, where there's an equity applicant, they would be more open to, to allow for permutation within the half mile. Then, of course, this has to go to the zoning board appeal, and you have to get a variance. Both us and the other applicant will have to get a variance. So we don't deny that there's a buffer zone issue here within the half mile. We think that there's demand here for it, both population based and interest based. And that's all I have to say on that for now.
Thank you, Mike. Guys, reiterate, this is the public meeting for one forty four Harvard Ave, all right? So Barry, Barry Hines, I'm gonna mute you next, just sent you the request. Barry, there?
Eric? Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Barry Hines. I own Barry Hines, Inc., which abuts the property of the proposed business. I'm calling, my family has been in business in the Alston Brighton area for sixty years, and I've been operating my business for the last twenty two years. The parking lot that is the rear of the proposed business is where I've been parking, I've been renting it for about twenty two years now. And they're taking it over. And I just wanted to call in to, to say that I'm not opposed to the, to the, the business coming in. I'm not supporting you at this time either, but I am in talks with them, trying to keep my access to the back of my building, which is a, an access through that property. So I just wanted to make that on the record.
Understood, thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry, and I know that we've been in touch and we're in continued conversations, and we're, we're looking forward to working things through with you.
He seems reasonable.
All right, Juan, Juan G., just sent you the request.
He's a musician, I guess. Makes sense.
Juan? You there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Juan, go ahead.
Apologies for that. So I just had a few questions, but I assure you, they all kind of tie directly into the one forty four Harvard Ave location. But the first being, you know, I had done some research and I came across some information that I was just curious to hear your take on. And that kind of ties into the gentleman, Tabba Mosley, so he was previously an equity applicant or file at the one forty four Harvard Ave location, I was just curious to hear a little bit of, about just what transpired there and with that situation.
I know Tabba, you know, I know his great family, they are, you know, well known to the broader community. But he's not part of this application. This is a totally separate team that has assembled itself for this specific location. I have properties that I've looked at three, four, or five times with three, four, or five different clients. There's a lot of, you know, there's only so many properties that don't have a mortgage, that are owned outright, that will allow for cannabis, that will have direct access off the street, that will allow for handicap access, all those things. You start to look at where they are and that, you know, have the right size and all that. That parking in this case, and there's very far and few between. So what happens is you often get two, three, four people looking at the same property. Perhaps that's what happened here, I don't know. This is the only applicant that I've worked for at this location, and Tabba was never part of it, as far as this application goes.
All right. Deon, apologize when I mispronounced that, just sent you the unmute request. Deon H.
Thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to say, I have a couple of questions. One of us started off by saying that I oppose the one forty four Harvard Ave proposal, but I can ask questions. I have a couple of questions, I can ask them collectively if you want me to, or I can ask them one by one and have you respond, it's up to you.
I ask them collectively ideally.
Okay, all right, so you had mentioned earlier about the parking in the Glenville Terrace area. And, you know, I understand that you're talking about the parking behind the building, as well as the other parking spaces that you have for employees, customers, and then you're talking about the municipal lot. My question to you is, there's, there's customers, are there people who are residents of the area who are currently parking there? So do you have a solution for where you plan on having those people park since you're gonna be displacing them in what their regular parking spaces have been, number one? And then number two, you know, the attorney, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, Attorney Ross, you've been, you've been doing a lot of the talking tonight, and I know that, you know, Leah is fifty one percent owner. So the question I have for you is, who's gonna be kind of running the day to day store operations? I know you might have a general manager, but because she's fifty one percent owner, as well as Edwin Fowler, who's the other owner, I just wanted to know who is going to be running the operation if you are placed in that location.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Well, I won't be running, I will not be running the operation.
Yeah, and I'll be running my own store.
You're gonna be running your own store.
Absolutely, it's my store.
Okay, so you're standing in front of the person who'll be running it. In terms of the, oh, sorry, Connor, were you gonna say something?
Nope, nope, that's fine, go ahead to parking.
Just in terms of the parking issue, yeah, I mean, you know, it's you're kind of damned if you do and you're damned if you don't, right? I mean, the neighborhood says, what are you gonna do with all the parking? So you go out, you find parking, and then someone says, well, you're displacing someone else who was using that parking. As best as I can see, this is, it's a pretty large lot that we're only taking ten spaces for. And I don't, I don't even know if we're gonna need all those. I mean, I think there's a lot of, with the industry, I think there's a lot of fear that.
This, this whole parking thing is ridiculous, because anyone that lives in Alston Brighton, they walk. They walk, you walk to the store, you walk to the corner. Nobody is gonna be driving over to Alston to try to park to get cannabis. They're just not, it's just not where you'd go to drive. You just don't want to drive over there. So this is all just ridiculousness. I thought that question was kind of rude from that woman. She's like, Mike, you're doing a lot of talk, and who's gonna run this dispensary? Like, because a lawyer, a good, a good public speaker at government meetings, who's, who's been made his whole career doing that, right? And Leah Samora has him as an attorney, and he's doing a lot of the speaking. That's, that's a sign of strength, that's a sign that you, you know who, who's got the strength in this area, and you let him do the public speaking here. But to turn around and say, who's gonna run your store? Did you really think it was gonna be Mike Ross? You really think Mike Ross knows how to run a dispensary? It's Leah Samora. I mean, that was a dumb question. Public speaking, Mike Ross, running a dispensary, Leah Samora. Not hard to figure out, people. That, that's where we're at in this hearing so far.
All these people are coming, these stores aren't, they're not nearly as busy as when they were first opened. I think the problem was everyone saw Neta on Route Nine in Brookline and freaked out, and now everyone is over parking and over all that stuff.
They know that, and they're trying to use that as an issue to not let Leah open because they have a competing dispensary.
We will be ready. We are absolutely ready. Our employees have parking that is off the street, that will not take up parking spaces for the retailers in the area. Our Glenville will provide a buffer.
I'm gonna move ahead a little bit.
Thank you. All right, Alexander, I'm gonna call on you next, just sent you the unmute requests. Alexander, you there?
Can you hear me, hello?
Yep, Alexander, we can hear you now, please go ahead.
Great, yeah, my name is Alexander. I have lived in Alston Brighton for a number of years now. I'm a community organizer here in Alston Brighton, in both my professional life and on my free time. I do legally have to say, I'm here as an individual, nothing reflects my workplace. So I do organizing work here in Alston in the equitable transportation space. And I get involved a lot in the community on my own time, doing things like volunteering with Alston Village Main Streets, volunteering for campaigns, going to community events. I want to go on record in strong opposition of the one forty four Harvard Ave proposal. The landlord of one forty four Harvard is Alpha Management. Alpha Management has a reputation of not taking care of its properties and charging excessive rents. Many of the empty storefronts on Harvard Ave are actually owned by Alpha Management. The lease was just assigned to Optco in October twenty twenty one.
All right, so this is an activist that's not related to any of this shit. He's got a beef with the management company that actually owns the property. Alpha Management does frigging suck. If you look into them, they are not good. But you have to realize, again, Leah Samora and these cannabis applicants, if they don't own a property or a building, they don't have a choice who they lease from. They, they, there are, like Mike Ross said, there are so few spots. That's why Mike Ross has been at this location with different dispensary applicants, because everyone's looking at the same spots, because there are so few spots. So I'm gonna skip over this, because this is not pertinent, you know, it's not important to what we're discussing.
Guys, and once again, chat, our function is to ask questions, all right? It's not for debates, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, right?
Hello, hello, hello?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm the owner of the just next door building, one forty, of the duplex here. And I joined this Harvard Avenue like two years ago. I can't say that due to the COVID, the, the, the business has been so bad. Even right now, it's, it's not fully recovered. So on my personal opinion, I really welcome the cannabis business come to my next door for helping the whole street of the business to go up, to bring the people, to bring the people here for.
Oh, here's a local business that is right next door, he wants, he wants her to open, because he knows it will help his business, bring more people into the neighborhood. So he, this, this guy, I like him, he's great.
More businesses. But the only concern that I have, the same thing that I asked a lot of people mentioned about the parking spaces. Right now, even my customer is, you know, afraid of the parking spaces currently. Like, even on the street or behind the building, the huge parking lot, it's not, it's not enough for my customer to eat right now, so far, so I would imagine, I mean, it's kind of a huge problem for my neighbors if they come.
I'm gonna skip over this.
I know we're talking about one forty four, but, so I'm just a little unsure on how the project at one sixteen can be approved, and now there's gonna be a project at one forty four. I know, I know sometimes they bend the rules a little bit on the buffer zone distance, but, I mean, this is practically next door to that other facility, so how does that work as far as the city's concerned? I mean, I don't, I can't imagine they're gonna let two stores open up.
Yeah, so, Chris, that's a great question. So the other applicant has gone through and has been approved by the Cannabis Board, the Boston Cannabis Board. They would still need to go on to the Boston Zoning Board of Appeals. So the Zoning Board of Appeals takes a look at the zoning side, they're the ones that make the determination, and then they still have to go on to the Cannabis Control Commission, which is at the state level. So although the other applicant has hit one checkpoint in the approval process, they still have to go before the Zoning Board of Appeals, as with this applicant as well. So, so that is something. So it's to be determined, so Zoning Board of Appeals takes a look at, you know, the buffer zone issue, you know, if there's other applications that are within the area, they take a look, see if there's, you know, a certain desire or a need in the area with foot traffic, other means that can support multiple applicants within a short, short space. There's some parts of the city, you know, Mike has, has been involved in other applications throughout the city. Sometimes the board does take a hard line when it comes to the buffer zone, other times they do not. The main thing that I'm thinking of is around Newberry Street, there's, I think, at least three different cannabis stores that have opened up. I don't think they're all on Newberry Street, but they're within a certain proximity, they're within the buffer of each other. So ultimately, it will be the Zoning Board of Appeals that will make that decision whether or not to take a hard line on the border, or if they feel that there's enough demand, they'll allow for multiple applications, so.
You know, looks really large on that plan, but there's a lot of dumpsters and
for the area for parking, and so we, we felt like bringing in the, the res.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you for putting these questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right. Uh, Moore and Cynthia, just sent you the unmute request.
This is Mar and Cynthia, the, these are two people I have featured on my show. The interview with Cynthia is heavily quoted in the lawsuit against me. These, Mar, Mar Stringer. Who you're gonna hear speak. He is one of my co-defendants here. And he's gonna support, he's gonna support this applicant. Watch.
Hey. How's it going? We are, I am in a hundred percent favor for this. Um, if you look at over here where we at. By Randall, if you have green floor right next to canopy and rocking, you have green floor right across street canopy. It doesn't stop anybody's money. That's a lot of fear mongering. Um, I'm just, just, I'm really embarrassed about a lot of these equity people coming up saying that, um.
Let's, let's avoid, let's, let's avoid taking shots at other people. Let's address it simply.
I'm not taking shots, but please kind of let me finish while you allow those other individuals to finish, brother. Thank you. Um, uh, I, I think Leah is a hundred and ten percent equity. She's definitely a hundred and ten percent Boston. She's been in Boston. And I don't understand what you think equity people are supposed to do. Do you understand where we're supposed to make these? I, I, my hat goes off to people like Leah and her husband. Um, who are able to make these deals with these businesses and hold them accountable. I like this. I love to see stuff like this. I don't like to see MSOs coming to our state alone about themselves. Um, I've only been in Massachusetts for about ten years, but I got a, uh, arrested in Massa, in Boston. In twenty-seven, in twenty sixteen, I got arrested for her undercover copy in Boston. So I think I'm Boston enough to speak on cannabis. And my arrest was on cannabis. Um, Lifetime Cannabis Cowboy, my first arrest was in twenty, uh, was I at fourteen years old in nineteen ninety-four. So, uh, you know. To speak intelligently on this subject, I think I've been around a block enough and, uh, I love what I see. I love how the industry is going. I love how these companies are lifting up equity people, people in the trenches, locals, investing in locals, you know? I mean, I don't know, uh, what kind of fantasy world people are living in, but I just loved it when I see. Uh, white men, white women, white individuals respecting equity. You know, and, and, uh, helping us enter this industry that, you know, exploited us through mass incarceration for all these years. But that's all I have to say on that. I'm gonna let my wife speak.
Thank you. Um, hi, my name is Cynthia Mauplin. Um, and I'd just like to introduce myself and go on record as being a lifelong Massachusetts resident. Right outside of the city of Boston. And one of the things I want to highlight with this particular applicant that is exciting. Is that when we look at the data around who are the, uh, business owners in Massachusetts, we only have eleven percent people of color. And nine percent total, this includes, uh, both, uh, people of color and, or women, nine percent. So to see Leah standing here before us with a project that is not only, um, representative of the charge that we have here in Massachusetts. But also speaks to the spirit that the city of Boston is looking to uplift is a testament to her and the investors that are looking to back her. I think, um, a lot of the people who, uh, may not be fully understanding the, uh, climate in terms of. What is happening with the businesses as they enter into the communities and what, um, what actually transpires, uh, as, uh, my husband said. There's a lot of fear mongering when, um, there's misinformation being circulated. I think the, um, attorney here, uh, Mike Ross, um, has done a really, uh, strong, uh, job in terms of reiterating that, um. Leah is here representing her business as an owner for her business and she has done the hard work in terms of partnering. And finding the capital and the resources. This is not an easy lift. The, um, the requirements to enter into this space are really difficult and to say that we want to achieve equity. But then not want to put in place the structures and proponents necessary for equity to actually exist is hypocritical. And then I do want to just, some common sense, um, um, pieces of information I'd like to share with the public, with the community. Um, when we talk about, uh, issues around parking, which is something that I hear come up significantly more in equity applicants than I do. With other applicant, than other non-equity applicants across the state. In this particular instance, um. Leah's project, she has done a great job in terms of making sure that there is parking available. But in general, customers are spending, uh, on average, ten minutes at most in the store. So parking, um. Being a huge barrier for other businesses is not, um, is not a reality. It's not the reality that people once thought it was back in two thousand eighteen when our industry first opened up. We're seeing that, uh, a lot of our businesses are able to have systems in place that can streamline the processes and the. And the experience for the customer so that, that's not a huge barrier. And to be honest, um. I appreciated the, the neighbor that came on and said that he's excited to see can, a business like cannabis come in because it will bring, it will drive. Um, customers, it'll bring that to the, uh, to the area. And that is very, um, impactful for several, several reasons. One. Um, the, it, it actually highlights and negates the previous argument or concern that someone had about the empty storefronts. So now you have a business that we know has a track record of generating revenue to be able to sustain the, um, some of the high costs of rent in the Boston area. Um, and then secondly, again, if it were another business that came in and that could not sustain, it would pose, um, a, a, a challenge and put. That area and of the community back in the same position that it was. All that, again, to just wrap up and say, I am a strong proponent and supporter of this project. I'd love to see Boston push this forward. We need more women to own businesses. We need more, uh, um. Minority, black-owned businesses, and we need more black women-owned businesses in Massachusetts. And Boston should continue to lead that and support this project. And with that, I will close my record.
Great. Thank you, Cynthia. Folks, once again, the chat function is for questions. For those who don't want to raise their hands, I'm seeing a lot of debates going back and forth here. I will start kicking people out specifically for the application.
Uh, this guy up on the top left is obviously, he's a representative of, uh, either the neighborhood or the, the city. And he's basically noting the people are fighting in the chat. This is a community outreach meeting. And it's gonna get worse. The hearing is gonna get shut down because of the people in the chat.
At one forty-four Harvard app, all right? All right, with that, who's up next? For sure? I'm gonna send you the request. Unmute yourself. For sure?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, how are you? Um, so I just want to express my, um. I agree exactly with Mar and Cynthia, actually. Spot on. I couldn't have said it better myself. Um, Leah, amazing work. I'm very proud of you. We need more black women-owned businesses in the Boston area. You are doing exactly what most minorities only can dream of. The fact that you, you know, you've sustained and you've acquired that, you know. The equity and a, the ability to more or less open a business as a minority, which is very difficult. My parents did that thirty-one years ago. Until this day, they still struggle to get things done. Still struggle to gain money from the banks and what, what have you. But I'm also a user. I called in as a user, but I honor to you, you know. Basically commend Mar and Cynthia for what they said. As a user, it is very difficult to find, you know, a decent, accessible. Dispensary with what you guys are doing with the parking. I know other places that I don't want to say names. It's very difficult to find parking, very difficult to gain, you know, access to the building. Um, it's just on a main road and, you know, Mike Ross has mentioned that previously, the location. That was something that was very difficult to, you know. See, you know, an alternative to at the beginning. But why would you try to shut down an opportunity for a user? And I'm also a user with, um. MS. So it's very difficult for me to walk long distances. I get tired, I get fatigued very easily. With something like this, it would be very idea. I live in the Alston area. I'm a strong proponent of yours, Leah, and I wish you guys all the best and best of luck on every endeavor going forward. We should not be shutting down people, especially minorities, especially female-owned businesses. That doesn't make sense to me. And this, you know, the idea of competition is gonna shut up every other business. I don't, I don't accept that and I don't believe it. That's ridiculous and that's absurd.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, taking a pause to read some of the comments that we've received. Uh, my name is Autumn. I'm a lifelong resident of Brighton. A strongly opposed proposal at one forty-four Harvard Ave. My community, I'd like to see promotional of local businesses in place of large corporations. Thank you. I think we had another comment from another person here. Uh, Jenny, I own regeneration tattoo at one fifty-five Harvard Ave. I oppose the opening of Dr. Green Thumb at one forty-four Harvard Ave. I'd love to support you as another woman-owned business. However, I've yet to meet with you, which I find disappointing.
Can I just say, Jenny, you're absolutely right. You should have received a knock on your door. I regret, we regret that that didn't happen. Um. You know, we're, we're still gonna, we, we're doing walks and we're doing outreach. Leah is doing it herself. Um, it's just taking her a while to get to everyone, but, um. Expect to see us, uh, and maybe we can, we can have a conversation, but we appreciate your comment and understand it. And, uh, we'll hope to work to turn you around.
Okay. Let's see. Chris G, I think we might have missed you. I don't know if you want to raise your hand again. I'm sorry about that. Sorry you on here and then I don't see you anymore. Brenda O, I'm gonna send you a request. Unmute yourself. Brenda, you can go next.
I was having technical difficulties getting on here in the first place. I don't know if you guys can hear me. Um.
We can hear you now. If you go ahead, please.
Perfect. Uh, my name is Brenda and I'm in opposition of the opening of one forty-four Harvard Ave. I'm concerned because I really would like to know, it seems like there's a lot of debate as far as the parking would go, but I do know that. For somebody who does live near a dispensary, traffic and parking tends, tends to be a problem on a daily basis throughout the entire day. And I live down the road from it. So I'd like to know how you guys are or what you guys have in place. Where all of the businesses are working together to make sure that you're on the same page. Um, also, I do think that allowing a multimillion giant like, um. Cookies or any of its affiliates to set up shop two hundred feet away from a social equity, another social equity, um, candidate could be crippling to their business. It's just a concern of mine.
Like I said, keep, please keep it focused on one forty-four Harvard Ave.
Sure. Um. And, you know, as a, as a fellow businesswoman, I will say I always support another businesswoman, but, um. We're just kind of concerned about like the, the inner workings or the outer workings as far as like the outreach goes and how it's gonna be impacting the people of our community. How is it gonna be giving back to the people who were impacted by the war on drugs? And, um, the other benefits that your business will be bringing to our bus, um, into our community.
Right, thank you.
Um, and I'd like to know if you guys can go over that some more. Thank you.
Notice how she slipped up and said into our business? I wonder what her business interest are. Seems like she was rooting for the other, the other competing dispensary, right? Hmm.
Uh, yeah, so I was just, and look, these are, these are actually really, these are fair questions. I mean, you, you, you want to know who is doing business in your community. Um, you know, I, I would, I would tell you that I don't know of any. Equity applicants that have been able to bankroll this thing themselves. Um, they've all reached out to different investors. Some of those investors are in the form of people within the industry and some of the investors have nothing to do with the industry. They just have money. Um, and everyone has a different way of doing it. Um, Leah was deliberate in what she put together here. She's been in the industry. She's, she's, uh, created a product that helps people around intimacy using cannabis. Um, and it's, it's an amazing product that, uh, is giving a lot of relief to people who desperately need it. And, um, you know, she's an activist in this space. There are obviously some people out there who. You know, they want to support this other group, but it's not unfair for you to ask the question, who is doing business in my community? I'd encourage you to get to know Leah, to see her that she's a real person and that she's got tremendous credibility and legitimacy. And she, it's because of that that she's been able to put this together. And, and we know, we wish no harm to the other group who had to do their own fundraising for this. And I'm sure you can find some people in all these groups that are out of state and that are from whatever, do, from different, uh, walks of life. But, you know, the bottom line is who's left controlling the entity? Who has control? Leah does. She owns fifty-one percent and has control of this entity. She is in charge of this entity. You can't go to the Boston Cannabis Board and tell them that you have an equity applicant who's running the show. And then summarily get rid of that equity applicant. The Boston Cannabis Board won't have that. They've already said that they won't have that. It's written into their regulations. So no one with their right mind would try to get into, into bed with an operator, uh, with that being their goal. It just makes no sense. So. Leah is your person. She's the one that you'll get to know. And I urge you to do so. In terms of traffic and parking. That's another very fair question, especially if you live right down the road from where we are. Um, we, we got the ten extra parking space on Glenville Ave for the very reason that we believe that, um, our repeat customers will continue to use though. Is that the people parking there are the people that work there. That will not be the situation here. We have places for our cars. Not every application can say that. Not every Alston application can say that. So we, we feel like that's gonna help the problem overall.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Max, so your hand is raised. Just sent you the unmute request. Next. Send the request again. Max, hand raised. All right. Juan, I see you have your hand raised again. I will send you an unmute request. Juan, please go ahead. Juan G.
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yep, Juan, we can hear you now. Yes.
Perfect, perfect. So, you know, I think it's, it's great to see a black woman at the forefront of this project. Um, but I think what a lot of folks are, are voicing is that. You know, there's, there's other folks that we've heard Fowler's invested in this and other investors that have skin in the game. I think we're really curious to hear. Um, more from Leah as well about what's gonna happen in our community. I think we've heard a lot from Mike Ross. But we want to hear about, you know, how you intend to impact local businesses, how this intends to impact residents. We want to hear really. From those investors as well, right? And, and it doesn't seem like any of them are present. And, and like I said, we haven't heard much from Leah. So. You know, I would love to hear more from Leah around her plans with this and, and again, how it's gonna impact the community.
Listen, Leah employs me, so she, she, she can, can absolutely, you know, I'm, I'm here at her be, behalf. I, before she says anything, I just want to point out. That not a single person.
You notice what they're doing here, folks?
If they could hear.
Now, now they're using B Real from California against her. They're using, uh, Mike Ross against her. Oh, look at the, the white guy speaking for you. Did you see this? That's some passive aggressive bullshit that they just threw at her. Notice none of them are, are really saying their names or, or if they're associated with that other dispensary rival group that has an issue with Leah's application.
Investors. Okay, so let's, let's at least try to level the playing fields here. You know, if you're gonna be fair, you got to.
Um, hi, thank you for that. Um, so my background for the past twenty-plus years, I worked in nonprofit as a workforce development technology trainer, doing, um, just that, trying to help other people, um. Uh, um, have better employment or gain better employment. Um, and I did it for twenty-plus years. I left my job crying, didn't want to leave. My husband convinced me. That I could get into this industry and do the same thing. Um, one thing about me is that I just don't do things just to be doing them, just for the, because that's what everybody else is doing. I, I have to have a reason and there, and there has to be a purpose behind what I endure. One of the things is, is that I'm a woman. I'm a black woman, very proud black woman. Uh, and so one of the things I hope to do is encourage other black women and other women to get into this industry because for some reason we feel like we don't belong here. Um, another thing is, is, um. With the different, um, uh, stores, I'll be able to employ people, you know, and at a higher rate than most other, um, people. We, we, we have an obligation to. Go beyond the. The, 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 um. The cost of living rate for our employees. We have an obligation to hire as an economic empowerment applicant, not just a regular applicant, but as an, as an economic empowerment applicant. We have higher obligations to make sure that we hire the right people to be in this industry, right? Seventy-five percent of the people other than, uh, the other companies, they don't have that obligation. We do. Right? So the one thing that I plan to do is impact the way that I can impact your communities. Workforce development is a big, um, is a big part of me. So any, uh, dealing with the homeless, dealing with, uh, women shelters. Dealing with the youth, with technology, all those things are things that I plan to bring if they're willing to work with cannabis. Not all these businesses are willing to work with us. So I have to work with people that are willing to work with me. So does that answer your question?
Thank you, Leah. So Jacob, I see your hand raised. Just sent you the unmute request. Yep, Jacob?
Hi there. Uh, I'm coming into this meeting, uh, with no affiliation with any offices. I'm a, I live at twelve eleven Commonwealth Avenue, so I'm literally right around the corner. Um, I just want to say like, Leah, thank you for your candidness. Um, it's hard coming into a space like this. Um, and I think that like Alston Brighton as a neighborhood needs to see more strong black women coming forward as leaders in the community because it's something that I think we lack often. And, um. You know, when a bakery opens up next to a bakery on Harvard Avenue, no one really says anything, but because of this. This is such a scrutinized process. I think it's, it's, it's a little unfair. And again, I'm coming at this with this personal views, but. If you're able as an equity applicant to thrive in this community and another applicant next door who's also an equity applicant is able to thrive, then more power to the equity applicants. You know, the, the racist war on drugs has impacted all, us too, too much for us to, you know, be worried about these small things. So I just want to say. be worried about these small things. So I just want to say I personally support you and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
I wonder if he's getting messages about what's going on in the chat.
Unmute, Max.
I, I wonder if he's getting messages about what's going on in the chat right now. That was a good call. Like that, that guy, you noticed too, he, he noted that he had no skin in the game. A lot of the naysayers aren't saying that, right? Because they got a bias. They got a, they got a side.
I don't hear anything. All right. Will Justice, Will, you've been very local, very vocal in the chat function. I'm going to unmute you. Please keep it concise and focused to one forty-four Harvard Ave, okay?
This guy has been obviously saying some shit in the chat. And this moderator, who's obviously a neutral party from the city of Austin is saying, hey dude, we'll let you up, we'll let you speak, but you've been saying some shit in the chat. Let's just keep it to this applicant. What's he gonna say? What do you think he's gonna say? Let's listen to what this guy has to say.
Will, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm gonna tell you this, don't, don't tell me how to speak, first off. So, um, Will Justice, I'm from Rock.
Don't tell me how to speak, first off. This is going good.
Roxbury. And, um, like I'm seeing like a lot of anti-equity speech and it's like, I was there when people were going against the equity. And now that they have their money, they're, they're out here and they're doing what they do. And it's like, yo, I wish you all the success in the world, but I have to oppose because the people who don't have all these resources and need the resources, you're trying to push them out and that is a problem. So you, you cannot be making, like you can't be breaking people's backs and sitting there saying, whoa, I'm making progress. So, I mean, so what? This is not, this is not a good thing. So anybody speaking on anti-equity, it's like, how good of a business are you going to be because you do not care about this community? If you're going to bring in outsiders who don't care about our community, that's like, if I bring somebody into a party and I know that person is going to rob everyone, I'm responsible. Because I know that's what they're going to do. And what I was about to say is like, you're acting like a bakery against another bakery. No, you're talking about Sarah Lee, a factory versus a mom and pop. All right. That's not the same thing. That's not competition.
Everything this guy is saying, we could mirror and turn it right back at them. I mean, they're, they're literally working with the government, getting funding from the government. They're literally have a nonprofit that gets money from the city of, like, you know what I'm saying? Like, everything he's saying is so full of shit.
That's called crushing. Like, and they know that there's no way to compete. So it's like, you, you can't equate this, stop this false narrative. I don't know these other people. But I'll tell you, I'm against some people because they've gone against my people and I'm going to have to fight you against my people because.
I'm gonna have to. Take. Fight you. Oh, my people, my people over your people, I'm gonna have to fight you. Listen to that language. Do you hear that? We're, we're gonna have to fight you, he said. My people. Leah is the same skin color as you, bro. You're mad at her because she teamed up with Cypress Hill? I mean, are you shitting me, dude? You say you don't know these other people, but do your boys that have been giving you these talking points, do they know them? Where did the talking points that you're reciting, dude? Where did they come from? They come from the Big Hope Project? They come from your boy Harry and David? This is sick. This is disgusting. You got played, dude. If you didn't get a piece of it, maybe you got a piece of it. I don't know. You get a piece of it, bro?
The ones who've actually been affected, you know, see, and it's like, I can't, I can't support it. I can't.
You get, I want to know, bro, this guy who's speaking, whoever he is, this real street guy from Roxbury, did you get a piece of it? Did they pay you to be at this hearing? Because I heard that there's a rent, rent a crowd to a hearing. Did you get a payment? Because that's what it seems like, dude. And if you didn't get a payment, they, they, they use you. They got, they took your money, dude.
Of black owned business. If you know who I am, this Will Justice, I am black owned business. But if you sit there going outside, going outside the bus, the, the, the community, and you're getting people who don't care about my community, you're just another gentrifier, which is another thing I fight.
All right. Thank you, Will.
He's a gentrifier. Here's a, here's a woman from Dorchester who wants to just employ some people. And he's calling her a gentrifier because his boys don't want her to open because they're hooked up with these other dudes. And because I reported on this shit, this is why I'm getting sued because of the games that were going on. This is, this is like the beginning of it. Yeah, gentrification. Like, come on, guy. Does, does this woman look like a gentrifier? Does she really look like she's gentrifying the neighborhood of Austin Brighton? Are you shitting me? Austin Brighton is a white neighborhood too. I gotta say, it's a white college kid neighborhood. Not rich, but it's white. It's like white kids. It's like the music scene. There's some Asians there. But jeez, he's talking about his neighborhood. This is Austin Brighton, dude. You're from Roxbury. What are you talking about, dude? Gentrification. What a jackass.
Your hand is raised. I'll go ahead and unmute you. Sal just sent you the request unmute. Yep, Sal.
Almost to the part where you get to David, the guy who got arrested for child rape, the other brother. He's coming up.
Sal, we can't hear you. Hello? All right. Max, try you again. Just sent you the request to unmute yourself. Max. All right, Sal, we'll give you another try. Sal, just sent you the request unmute yourself. Yep, Sal. Sal, I'm afraid we can't hear you. Can you go ahead? All right, folks. So it's seven twenty-four. We've heard a lot of comments, a lot of feedback from Butters and people beyond. At some point, the applicant, David, I'll give you a shot. David, you want to raise your hand again? I think you spoke earlier.
This is it. This is David. This is the, the guy who sued me, Harry, spoke earlier. This is his brother, the co-founder, who is no longer associated with the Big Hope Project, apparently because he was arrested for child rape under age fourteen. But that's not the reason his brother Harry lost money. That's not the reason they lost their funding, the Big Hope Project. Not because the brother got into trouble. It's because of my show. That, that's what the lawsuit is. This is how stupid this lawsuit is. This is when he was still part of the Big Hope Project, before he got arrested for child rape.
David, you there?
Yes.
Yep.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear now, David. Yes.
How you doing? This is David. I'm a Boston resident. I want to go on record in strong opposition against the one forty-four Harvard Ave proposal. You know, I really want to support black owned business, but like Will Justice said, this is gentrified. I believe Leslie Delaney Hawking, who is a.
Is, is, uh, child, what's child rape? Is that gentrification? What, what is child rape, dude? Does your boy, Will Justice, support child rape too? Like seriously, this is dude, he talking about the community. What are we doing here? And they're blaming their loss of their, of their nonprofit. They lost their funding. It's my fault and not this dude David who got arrested for child rape under fourteen, under age fourteen. This is, this is, this is who they sent to take down a black woman to make sure her dispensary didn't open. For people watching, no, you can't call in. This happened a couple of years ago. She did not get to open this dispensary. They won. They threatened her. You're going to see this hearing end. This guy right here allegedly has been arrested and is being tried for child rape under age fourteen. This was the co-founder of the nonprofit Big Hope Project. That I'm being blamed, part of the lawsuit from his brother Harry is that I ruined the Big Hope Project. My show sunk the Big Hope Project, but his brother David, or his brother Harry, excuse me, never mentions that David got arrested for child rape.
Boston Cannabis Control Board member has shown public support for this company, which is a conflict of interest.
He no longer works for the Cannabis Board, David.
Yes, but I'm just saying in, in the past, I think that's a.
A state, so here's a statement of, of, a false statement. So here's, he just made a misstatement. It's funny how they're, they're trying to charge me for libel and defamation, but the city of Boston representative has to correct his, his incorrect statement. Mike Ross had to remind the other brother who's suing me. An attorney had to say some shit about what he said. These guys, everything they accused me of, that's what they did to Leah. They did the defamation. They were the ones who were malicious. They were the ones who had an agenda. I had no agenda. I have no business agenda. I did this for the citizens of Boston, for the right thing, to show what was actually going on. And because of that, some big money behind these, these crux, I think they want to shut us up. And they know freedom of speech isn't free. So that's why I'm asking people, if you can kick into my defense fund, it's much appreciated. It's costing me a lot of money.
Conflict of interest. I'm basically getting at the point that it's an MSO in my eyes. And like Will Justice said, you guys are shutting down the mom and pop stores. And we really want to make sure that, you know, we support social equity in full, not halfway, you know, and we really want to make sure that we're well represented. I'm a Boston resident, born and raised, and I feel like no one is addressed.
We, we, we want to make sure we're well represented by our crew. That's what it's really about. We want to make sure that we're running all the dollars. We're deciding who gets to open. We're deciding what gets on the shelves. We run this shit, me and my bro. And our nonprofit and our political connections and man, Michelle Wu, we run this shit.
Fact that there's a partnership between Cookies and Dr. Green and Green them. They have the same address. So I think that's a, a conflict of interest as well. And also there's big money coming from Cypress Hill from California is just.
Funny coming from Cypress Hill, but what about the money you and Harry, Harry and David took? How about all the money you guys got from Garden Remedies and all these other big dispensaries with your white label products and your social equity program? And where's that money, bro? Did it actually go to what you said it was going to go to? Or did you and Harry, Harry and David just collect the money and we know the answer, Harry and David? What did you actually do with all that money you collected? You talk about collecting money. She never got any money. You guys did. You're so full of shit. What's up is down, what's down is up. Everybody sees it. That's why you lost the funding, Harry and David, because people saw you guys are full of shit.
What we see for social equity.
What we see is you're full of shit, dude. You are full of shit and you got arrested for child rape under age fourteen and you want to sue me and you think I'm going to shut up about this?
People that are.
I'm not shutting up. I am not shutting up.
Struggling in Boston, the, the rate between, you know, the minorities and.
Did you say, did you say the rate or did you say the rape? How about that child rape you did, bro? Huh? How about how your, your, your nonprofit brother didn't tell anyone about it until it got exposed and then all of a sudden, oh, he's no longer part, then Grant Smith Ellis has to report on it, right? How come you didn't sue Grant Ellis when he was the first one to acknowledge the child rape arrest in public? We knew about it. I knew about it. Grant Smith Ellis was the, your boy was the first one to actually put it down on social media, right? How come you didn't sue him? Because that's what really caused the downfall of your nonprofit, isn't it? I know, I, I mean, I know what Grant posted was actually factual for once. But you guys don't let facts get in the way. You sue even when people tell the truth, right?
Immense. And we want to change that. This is not going to be the way to change equity and create equity, I believe. I'm in strong opposition and you know, I believe that the mom and pop store should, should get that opportunity.
I, 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 I mean, this guy, I, 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 I want my peace. I want to shake you down. You got to kiss my ring, Leah Samora. You guys went against us. You going against our scheme where we wanted to collect the money. We wanted the government to collect the money for the dispensaries and let us decide who gets it. You went against our scheme. You went directly to dispensaries and got a little, get, get a little operating money, Leah. How dare you? Watch how this ends now after David, the child grapeist under age fourteen, the nonprofit founder of the Big Hope Project, who's no longer with the Big Hope Project and it's not named in the lawsuit. They don't, they act like David, the child grapeist doesn't exist in the lawsuit. How shady are, are you as a lawyer, Mr. Attorney filing that lawsuit against me? You never, do you even know that David got arrested for child rape? Do you think that maybe is why Big Hope Project, their, their funding dried up? But no, it's Mike Crawford's fault because Mike Crawford talked the truth on his show with some guests and had some opinions and asked questions. I'm getting sued for, at one, one of the allegations gets me. It's for asking a question. Let's watch how this ends. Let's watch how this ends.
Had anything to do with.
Let, let's just say this too. This, again, this is Michael Ross, Prince Lobel, one of the biggest law firms in America, most respected. This is a big time attorney, Mike Ross speaking here. This is like Bettero speaking. This is a guy that has done some shit. And he's not a bullshit artist. He's not a liar. He's not a fraud. He's not even that slick. He's an honest, straight shooter, a good speaker, very smart. Mike Ross has said again to these nonprofit founders, hey, you're full of shit. Watch this. Watch what Mike Ross says about this. The, this is the brother of the non-founder, of the nonprofit co-founder who's suing me. The two brothers started this big whole project, this nonprofit. And both of the brothers spoke at this hearing a couple of years ago, and both times, Mike Ross, an attorney, a big time attorney, had to correct what they said. Watch this. Watch how this ends. Got a couple of minutes left. Mike Ross. Uh, gonna, gonna, uh, watch how the meeting ends and then I'm going to redirect you to a fundraiser tonight for my legal defense with Dan Gallagher, going over the documents. She's going to tell you how she feels about this lawsuit and she's looking at the court filings. We're going to have an attorney speaking about that tonight as well. Stick around.
Why we're here tonight. There is not, the only thing that that conversation had to do with is some beef that he and, and the others don't like a position that, that, that Leah took with regard to working with one of these other companies. That's her decision. She can do that. She should not be targeted and attacked by a, a group of people who are coordinating an effort.
Mostly men, mostly men.
All men, all men.
She.
All men.
She.
They're all thugs, dude.
Equity applicant as any other.
That's my opinion.
And she is, every bit of her life experience that she's been through, that she doesn't deserve to be put through this. We at my law firm provide discounts for anyone who's an equity applicant. I can tell you that we are applying that to this group here. We, because we're trying to support the industry in our own way. And that's what we did here. We see no difference in what Leah is trying to do than some of the other applicants. I do represent some multi-state operators. They exist. They're in the industry. This is not one of them, not even close. This is someone from Boston who's being unfairly treated by some other people from Boston. Call up and complain about the parking. Say you hate cannabis. Do.
What I like about Mike Ross, because he's like, yeah, I work for MSOs. I, the multi-state operators that you were shitting on, I worked for them. I, I've done business with them. But Leah is not that. She's not. She's not. She owns fifty-one percent of the company. She's not an MSO. If anyone, if anything, she was taking advantage of the MSOs. Mike Ross knows the truth. He's speaking the truth. He has to correct the record of these jokers who are dishonest.
What everyone else does at these meetings, but to, to target her because of some decisions that she's made previously that have nothing to do with this app, with this.
And here you go. Mike Ross called it targeting. That's what I call it. They've been targeting her, her husband and Mar Stringer and his wife, and now me. This is what they're doing. They're targeting us. They're trying to silence us. They try to shut down their businesses. Leah didn't get to open. This is targeting. They target, I believe they targeted them at the convention when they surrounded them, surrounded Mar Stringer and started a fight with them. And they also had a confrontation with Leah. And they also had a confrontation with Leah, Leah Samora and her husband. Those targeting, that's exactly what they do. They target people. And this is what, they thought they would get away with it. They didn't know. They didn't know that Leah Samora and uh Sia Samora, Mar Stringer and his wife were gonna stand up to them, that I would eventually stand up to them. They didn't realize that. They thought everyone was gonna be afraid of them. And a lot of people were afraid. A lot of people were afraid. And they told me about how they were afraid.
Application is not the purpose of this meeting. And if you try to do that, the Boston Cannabis Board, go ahead, try to.
Yeah, it's not often that I've had to kick out multiple people in a meeting, you know, and I've run the gamut. I've run billboard projects and cannabis projects, so this has been aggravating for me. All right. Yeah, it seems like people can't be civil on here, so we're after the meeting as it is.
Thank you.
Thanks for those who've attended.
Appreciate it.
Further comments can be sent to the Boston Cannabis Board. Please reach out to my office if you'd like to learn how to do that. Thanks for coming tonight. Have a good night.
Thank you. I gotta pick the.
Yeah. They had to shut down the meeting because there were threats being posted in the chat. These are the people that are trying to shut down my free speech right now. This was a nonprofit focused Big Hope Project, shutting down a woman, a woman, black owned business that they're supposed to represent. That they're supposed to champion. And the meeting ended with threats. And they did, I, I agree with Mike Ross, attorney Mike Ross from Prince Lobel. I feel like they targeted her. I feel like they targeted all of us and I want to know who's behind it. Who's trying to shut me down? Who's funding your lawsuit against me, dude? I want to thank everyone who's stuck around. I know there's a lot going on in the world. Uh, thank you, diehard jerks for being here. If you can kick in, I, I appreciate Joanne just kicked in twenty-five dollars uh to my defense fund. It's pinned at the top of the chat. Anonymous giver gave two hundred dollars uh just yesterday. I was so happy to get that. Thank you so much. Barbara P. Gave a day ago. She said free speech isn't free and that's the point. It costs money and I definitely need your support. I'm throwing in, I hope you guys can help me do this. This is for a good cause. We can't let them get away with this. Uh, Miss Home sixty-six also sent twenty dollars uh yesterday. Thank you so much. I want to thank everyone who's been kicking in on the uh give, send, go. It's pinned at the top. Uh, I'm also gonna, again, if you, if you do kick in a donation, you send an email to mjc boston one at yahoo dot com. If you want a Young Jerk sticker, I'll mail them out to you. Just send your mailing address. It's scrolling at the bo- bottom of the ticker. If you want to make sure you get that email address and follow the directions to get that sticker scrolling at the bottom. If you want to make a donation tonight to the defense fund, just send over an email after. I really appreciate anyone uh who can donate. Again, don't, don't starve yourself. If you can't afford dinner tonight, don't give. But if you can, please, I really appreciate the people that can uh kick in on this because this is, this is free speech. This is what it's about. And this is what they want to shut down. I want to thank Kathy, Kathy, my neighbor. Uh, she had uh twenty dollars tonight on Venmo and said, my hard work really does pay off. You are excellent on WRKO. Oh, thank you so much, Kathy. I really appreciate that. I am having a lot of fun on RKO and uh the Grace Curly Show. I'll be back there uh next, uh not this Friday, next Friday. So a week from this Friday, I'm supposed to be hosting over there. Again, I'm looking forward to that. I really appreciate everybody who's uh been supporting me on that as well. All right, I think that's it. I'm gonna tune out. I'm gonna redirect you to Calling All Beings with DJ and B and they're gonna have, again, attorney Nan Gallagher. She's going over the legal documents. Uh, she's gonna talk about the lawsuit against me. I love that an attorney's looking at it. She's gonna tell you what she thinks. She's gonna tell you what she thinks about the motion to dismiss my attorney's granted uh that he's filed. I'm gonna redirect you there. I'll be over there in the chat. I hope to see some of you there. Thank you so much, everybody. Thanks to our mod team, Jenno, Stephanie, Sarah, uh MJ, Scott McGinnis. I think I saw everybody in the chat today. Thank you so much to our mod team. We'll see you over at uh Calling All Beings. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.